September 8th, Tuesday, September 8th, and we have a full board with us. Apologies again for the delay in getting things started. But we'll just jump right in and go right to item three on the agenda, which is a public hearing for 129 Parker Street Amendment to the special permit decision. Welcome, everyone. And we're opening the public hearing for this item. And I guess we can just turn it directly over to the applicant for presentation.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I may have missed it. Did you announce the date for the record?
I believe so, September 8th.
Okay.
Thank you. So to the applicant, welcome, and floor is yours.
Thank you, Angelo Catanzaro for the applicant. And this is an application for an amendment to the planning board decision that became final in September of 2017 regarding supermarket signage. I think that our position has been pretty much set forth in the filings that we made. And I think that it has also, the analysis that we have are putting forth was also incorporated by the Assistant Town Planner in an email to us earlier this summer. Essentially, what we are looking for the board to do is to revise its decision by allowing Market Basket to install a front building sign with a total dimension of 338 square feet. Previously, I understand that Market Basket made an informal attempt at getting this sign approved. And this is the classic Market Basket sign that appears on dozens or dozens of their of their supermarkets throughout the Commonwealth and elsewhere, which are two simple words, market and basket. Somewhere along the way, either the board or the building inspector opined that that sign of 338 square feet, and at the time that it was presented, might have been slightly larger. I think it's been trimmed down a little bit, exceeded the 250 square foot maximum that was permitted by the board's decision. The board seemed to take the position that it was limited to that 250 square feet maximum because the concept plan approved by town meeting back in October of 2016 imposed such a limit. We have reviewed all of the filings with town meeting and everything else that is in conjunction with this issue, and I've submitted that as part of our statement in support of this application. And as it turns out, there were no dimensions assigned to the supermarket building sign when Market 32 was the proposed tenant. However, in the concept plan, which was incorporated into this board's decision as an exhibit, I believe it was Exhibit D, contained numerous pictorials of the Market 32 signage plan, which was proposed for the front of that building. That signage plan was well over 850 or 880 square feet. When Town Meeting approved the concept plan and then an attendant wayward sign plan, it did not approve a specific dimension for the supermarket plan. But it did approve the pictorials that were attached to the approved concept plan. And it's our position that would probably occurred when this board limited the amount of square footage that it didn't take into consideration what was actually approved by Town Meeting. If you look at the pictorials, which I've attached to our application, and if you prefer, we have a PowerPoint to illustrate what I'm talking about. What we're asking for tonight is very simple, I think. Okay, it's simply for you to exercise your authority, one, to amend a decision, and two, as you have previously done, now, this board assigned the 250 square feet limit. Town Meeting did not. We're asking you to exercise that same authority and increase that limit to 350 square feet so as to allow Market Basket to use and install the sign that it uses on almost all of its supermarkets. And I think everything is in the materials that we attached. I think this board has the authority to do that because you've already exercised the authority of setting a dimension for the sign and that this would accommodate a very important tenant. This tenant only wants to use one sign, not two signs, as the prior tenant or multiple signs as the prior tenant was going to. It would be that one sign facing the parking lot, I believe that would be facing north on the front of the supermarket building. And this would allow them to proceed and to go forward with their opening with their trademark sign. And I can, of course, address any questions that any of the board members have. There's one other thing I would add that, I'm sorry about that. Prior to the board's decision and prior to Town Meeting, we did submit the actual dimensions of the Market Basket sign, the Market 32 sign showing the 880 square feet. And I don't know how that was not incorporated into the presentation to Town Meeting, but it was certainly before the town, well before the October Town Meeting. And I believe that the Assistant Town Planner has confirmed that, in fact, that plan had been submitted to the town. So this is not something that we didn't provide information on and then we're trying to change after the fact. I cannot explain why it wasn't part of the package that actually went before Town Meeting. But the photographs, the large photographs of the Market 32 sign certainly were presented to Town Meeting, were approved by Town Meeting, even though they did not have dimensions.
Okay, thank you, Angelo. Is there a representative from Market Basket? And would you care to address this matter at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Carmine Tomas from LT Development, real estate manager for Market Basket. You know, everything that Angelo said is absolutely correct. We have been operating under the assumption that the single Market Basket sign on the front side of the building being substantially less than what was, we had believed was approved at Town Meeting for the former Market 32 development would be absolutely allowed under the prior approvals. This is, as Angelo mentioned, the Market Basket signage. There are no supermarkets in the chain that have any front signage smaller than the proposal here. Every supermarket has at least this size. Some are, in fact, a little bit larger. There is a letter that we submitted, I'm not sure if the board received it, but that Market Basket submitted. Basically identifying everything that goes into the sign, it's not, you know, we absolutely understand that the town does not want signage to be overdone disproportionately large on a building facade. We believe that if you and members of the board were to review the elevation and the proposal, you would see that it is very proportional with the size of the building and the facade. And this is something that, as Angelo said again, is very important to Market Basket. And we would certainly appreciate the board's assistance and support in getting this resolved.
Okay, thank you. So maybe I'll just take a second, see if I can restate what I've heard. And then Bill Nemser, if you can chime in, correct me, I guess. But it sounds like what I've heard is that the applicant is suggesting that the concept plan was silent on the size of the signage. And in fact, the limitation of 250 square feet came about during the site plan review process where the board exercised judgment to set a limit. That limit is lower than what is now being requested. And they're just simply asking us to exercise our judgment again and our authority. So essentially, this really doesn't have to do with the concept plan is what's being contended. So if we can maybe just start there, Bill, and see if that's your understanding, if you've reviewed that with counsel or in your colleagues, if you concur, basically. We can kind of start there and just try to understand kind of if we're operating sort of with our own, within our own scope or confirm that, I guess, and then we can proceed.
So the zoning bylaws for the NBOD specifically point out that any signage issues that are not spelled out in the concept plan that was approved by Town Meeting are to be determined by the board. When we did the final decision in 2017, we added the exhibit to sort of tie up any loose ends on the signage that were there. I think that at the time, we were not sure, I'm sure we didn't know the supermarket coming in. And I don't think we had a good idea of how many tenants were coming in, they were larger buildings at the time. But in any event, if you recall, we worked with a design reviewer, and we said, okay, well, here's what we'll do. And if they want to change it, you know, we'll look at it depending on the signage. I agree from, I did actually watch the video again just to make sure. But indeed, the Market 32 that was visual, was presented, did not have any dimensions written on it. It was just clear that it was substantial, substantially larger than 250 square feet. I think that in this case, this amendment, everything that the applicant has said is pretty much, I would agree with it. To be clear, though, it was, there was nothing submitted on the site plan that had the dimensions on it. I think it might have been in a preliminary talk ahead with perhaps the building department or something. But in any event, the spirit of the NBOD is to ensure that there's a general consistency with the concept plan. And I think looking at the illustrations of Market 32 and the scale of it, I think it's entirely reasonable.
Okay. Any other or any questions or comments from other board members?
I think it's reasonable.
You'll remind me, didn't we have a gentleman come in and present, was it for Market Basket months ago, for a sign that was for 250 square feet? Am I thinking correctly about this?
You are, you are. I should have mentioned that, Chris. A couple of months ago, or not too long ago, there was a, again, it became a question of our Exhibit E and the decision where we specified the numbers of cases, I think it was 250 square feet and part of it was going to be a smaller sign. But the essence of it was that to allow the cumulative square footage to exist in one sign rather than three. That was the decision we made. And at the time, you know, had we known that we were going to go in a sign, we could have, I suppose, had an amendment, public hearing at that point. That was a determinate finding. But that's right, Chris, that's what happened.
Thank you, Bill. I just wanted to make sure I was following this train of submissions correctly. I wouldn't mind, just for the record, so that the public can see exactly what we're talking about, Angelo. I wouldn't mind seeing the drawings. I think that would be helpful for everyone for the record. I don't see any issue with this personally, but I think it'd be good to see it.
Danny, can you put up the PowerPoint?
Bill Nemser, if you can, can I share the screen?
Oh, yeah. Did you get it?
Yep.
Okay.
Great, thank you, I see it.
Okay, let me go back and I'll just walk you through this rather quickly. I'll put it up on my screen separately, just so that, okay, the first pictorial is okay, the first one is simply, this was what was approved by Town Meeting. This was the cover sheet of what was approved. And it was submitted as a singular concept plan submittal. I think that's important only because the presentation of the site plan and the signage plan were made simultaneous. There weren't two separate presentations.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. If we can just make sure we're looking at the right slide here.
I'm looking at number one on the, Danny, you have it up?
Yes.
Okay, good. So that's number one. Then the second one, go down to the second one, Dan. I don't know if I can do it from here. Okay, the second one, this is the
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, can you get rid of your pop-up?
Yeah, can you just click on the got it button maybe and get it, close that out for us?
Danny, can you?
Yeah. I don't see it on screen.
That view looks fine to me.
Right. Now, that view, that sign, okay, was, this was part of what was submitted to Town Meeting and approved by Town Meeting. And this was appended to your decision, okay, in the context of your Exhibit D. So it was clear that the approval contemplated, at least if Market 32 was going to be the tenant, this is what the signage was that they were going to install. That's what was told to Town Meeting, that was what was told to the board because at that moment, we believed they were going to be the tenant. And so everyone was comfortable with that. And this is some of the other pictorials depicting the vast array of signage that Town Meeting approved as part of its site plan. The next
Concept plan, sorry.
As part of the concept plan, correct, okay, not differentiating. In fact, go back to two again, Danny. These pictorials were actually part of the concept plan under a subheading of supermarket elevations. And again, I can't explain why, but that's how it was presented to the town. Okay, and that's how it was presented to Town Meeting. Now, the next item number four, okay, is the, what has, everyone has been referring to as the concept, signage plan. Okay, and all that this does is locate signs, okay, it doesn't provide any dimensions. Now, following this submittal, okay, no, don't go there yet, Dan, stay with the sign. As part and immediately following this submittal, there were about 10 or 12 pages of Wayfairer signs, which did specify specific dimensions. Okay, and I don't have that on the screen, but your decision appended those so that other signage throughout the project had specific dimensions assigned. I believe that we thought that the next sign, if you go to five, was part of what was submitted. Now, apparently, it was not submitted at that time, but it was given to the town according to Caitlin back in March of 2016 as part of the original signage approval package for Town Meeting. And somehow, it did not get into the final one. And I can assure you that wasn't intentional. This was believed to be part of what we were proposing. We intended to propose this, and it's obvious that somehow it didn't get into the proposal that was actually made to Town Meeting. So that's really the history, and I would think that if Market 32 was the tenant, okay, they would be allowed to put up the signage that was depicted and approved. Now, Market Basket's sign, as Mr. Tomas has suggested, is a lot smaller. It's a lot less demonstrative. It's only one sign on the front of the building facing north to the parking lot. And we think that this sign would be a reasonable amendment to the bylaw, I mean, to the decision so as to allow Market Basket to go forward with the sign.
Thank you. And this, so this drawing is a scale drawing showing the 338 square feet signage as proposed.
Yes, it does. Danny, is that, I can't read it on his screen, but yes. Now, in our proposal, we had suggested 350 square feet, okay. But all that is required, correct me if I'm wrong, Carmine, is 338 square feet.
That's correct, Angelo. Yeah, that sign as presented there, I think it's just a matter of how that's actually calculated perhaps, but that is the sign we're seeking approval of. So as long as that sign is approved as part of this amendment, then we are good with that, absolutely.
We had a prior dialogue about whether or not this is the correct way of measuring that sign, but we have withdrawn that argument. I mean, this is, there's a lot of vacant space on these signs, but the town and the building inspector interpret your bylaw as requiring the rectangle, including the open space and not separate letters. The actual size of the separate letters is somewhere just north of 250 square feet if you measured the letters only and not the open space. But if the board would see fit to approving this sign by amending its decision to allow 338 square feet, all the problems would be resolved.
So let's do any other comments from the board, and then we'll shift over and have some comments from the public. Any other comments from the board before we move on to public comment?
I guess I just have one quick question, that the decision, the 250 square feet that was decided after the initial concept plan. Is it possible that that was referring to just the words on the Market 32 sign, you know, as opposed to the other signs which actually just have images, it seems? I'm just trying to figure out where that, you know, why the planning board would have picked that number specifically. And maybe it was relevant to that square, you know, Market 32 sign dimensions.
You know, having been there, I honestly can't tell you what we were, you know, tailoring that number to fit. So, I mean, I think, and, you know, I guess, Andrew, you were there, Bill, maybe you
If you don't recall that discussion, but
But the intention was there to limit, obviously, some kind of reasonable limitation. And, you know, I guess, it was also very much part of a larger, you know, signage kind of proposal for the total site. So I, you know, I guess, in the, you know, with signage being among many, many other details that we are looking at, it clearly was, you know, not considered carefully enough by all and that sort of water under the bridge. But my recollection of the just general intention is that, you know, that we had some kind of reasonable control over the the size and that it blended together with, you know, a suite of signage for the development. And other than that, I can't speak to, you know, why we arrived on that number.
Mr. Chair, I think what happened with that was we did have a designer viewer, Mark Rosenzahn, at the time. And we asked him to address where some of the outstanding issues that we had for signage and to provide some general recommendations. I have concerns about other parts of the of the signage that was approved in Exhibit E as well. And I think at the time, we talked about tenant signage and the possibility of smaller units rather than large units, because I think we're going to run into another shortage down the line for the tenant signs. But as I recall, it was basically, we need something, we don't have a supermarket here at this point. What do we come up with? And I think Mark, I think he drew out, he basically drew out Exhibit E for us. And that was how I recall everything happened.
Thank you.
I think we should focus on, you know, hearing from the board on, you know, what we're facing us now. Let's not rehash the old bits, you know, forever. And think about whether this is reasonable and hear from the public.
Other comments from the board before I go to public comment?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment, Greg.
Please, Jim.
Looking at the newest, I guess, from my viewpoint, the newest Market Basket up in Littleton. It's been open for a year, maybe two, in a development very similar in its concept to the one that we have up on 129 Parker Street. I don't find the Market Basket sign to be inappropriate at all. I think it's appropriate to the building, to the area. And I would find no problem at all approving the one that they proposed.
Thank you, Jim.
I will just agree that I think that my only reference to the other, the previous decision was, if, I don't want to be stepping on the toes of any previous board decisions. But I do think going from however many, that was like four image signs that presumably would be lit up at night, plus the text sign, to the one Market Basket sign, I do feel like they're comparable, you know, like I don't feel like the intent of, you know, what it looks like is changing enough to be a problem, so.
Thank you.
Five, yes, five.
All right, so anyone from the public, you could use your raise hand feature. We have just a few folks here. But please, if you have any questions or comments. All right, seeing none.
Greg, I did raise my hand.
Oh, um, excuse me, I'm sorry, I missed that. Hello, Trish, please go.
How are you, Trish Saunders, Detling Road? I would like clarification on one matter. And it feels very important to have this be clear because it's been stated that it's likely that additional requests for sign increases are going to be coming along. And I do want to remind the board that the one thing that is very different about this Market Basket and about this development than any other Market Basket we might look at is the fact that this market sits in the middle of three residential neighborhoods. So the question that I have, because I feel like it's important precedence to clarify, is that the last image that was shown has measuring boxes around Market and Basket as separate words. And the way I read other information related to how signs are measured, it's supposed to be a single large rectangle. And so I'm curious to know if the 338 is measuring Market and Basket as separate words and not measuring the space between them, or is it measuring the entire rectangle around Market Basket? And what I really want to approve?
If I may respond, if you look at the sign on the top, it's one rectangle.
And when I look to the lower right-hand corner, just to the left of that large item A?
Yeah, I see that also.
I can't see it clearly enough. It's too small on my screen for me to know if there are dimensions around that.
Yeah, that's
You are correct that if you are getting, I think that's the difference between the numbers that we were referring to earlier. So if you measure the two separately, that's 300 or whatever that is, 338 square feet.
3A.
Yep. And if you measure the box as an entirety, that's, I want to say it's 351, 352 square feet, something like that.
And I think the way that it's measured is really important to clarify. I would almost rather that the board be consistent in its measuring practices and vote for the larger amount than start to parse out signs that really, in essence, are a single entity. And so I just want to be sure, is, you know, what is the, how are signs measured? And how is this one being measured? Because I think it's going to set important precedence for the future when we know that there are going to be additional requests for signage increases in other parts of the development. The board's been kind of clear that they're okay with this sign. But are you measuring? The board's been kind of clear that they're okay with this sign, but are you measuring that as one consistent market basket and calling that 350 square feet? Or are you measuring that as two different signs and adding them up?
Greg, if I may?
Please.
I, my understanding is that we will be, we can obviously approve through your emotion what we are approving. In no way, though, do I believe that approval of this particular sign being shown is setting a precedent for any future discussions on signage.
My understanding is none of our decisions set precedence in any way and that we review every question on its individual merits.
This is a tier one sign. We have tier two and three. This is the only tier one sign for the project.
And the documentation is very clear that signs are to be measured as a single rectangle. Market and basket is part of the same sign. And so if you start parsing out how you measure this one, you're going to start parsing out how you measure other ones. And I feel like that's a slippery slope.
Trish, anyone can parse out signs however they want, but by no means is that going to change on how I approach looking at every individual case. By no means will we now, will I consider now parsing out additional signs in the future. That's just not how this is going to happen. We, if we approve this one, it gets approved as itself. This will, I assure you, in my mind, this will not set a precedent for parsing out signs in the future.
There was, there was a request that I was reading from what the developer submitted, making an argument for measuring each letter individually. And so there are so many ways to slice this pie. And I feel like that the town's documentation is clear that we measure signs as an entirety of a rectangle.
Yeah, just for that, Trish, let me just respond to that. That was something that was originally submitted. That's not this board's jurisdiction. This would, that would be under the building commissioner, and that's why it wasn't included as part of the hearing. That signage and interpretations, and that is the purview of the building commissioner. And when we originally looked at, or somebody had asked about how they thought the signs should be measured, building commissioner had his opinion and that's how he does it. But that was exactly what happened on that one.
Additionally, when I have been looking, I was looking at this and then the Market 32 images before the meeting, and I was looking at, like the Market 30, I know I keep saying this, but the word sign was very small, but the whole image was taking up a large amount of space. And I wonder when Town Meeting approved that, that image, right, as something that they wanted to vote for, they weren't just approving the small text part, right? Like they were approving the whole light up, you know, front facade sign, which is honestly much bigger and much brighter. There's a lot more large blocks of light. So when I was looking at the two of them, comparing them, that's what I was comparing. And I was comparing the fact that there's a lot less, you know, blocks of light, just a lot less square footage in terms of, if you were to look at that one that's on the screen now, look at the square footage from the corner of Market 32 all the way down to the corner of the orange panel, whatever that is. I mean, that's covering a huge portion of the front of the facade.
Salmon.
It is salmon.
Large rectangles, for sure. Like I'm looking at the large rectangles of the sign and the current market basket sign, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it would seem to me that the interpretation of how the sign is measured, my understanding is Rick's job. Sounds like there's been dialogue. And, you know, the applicant came to us with this proposal and including a number that they're recommending and they're saying that we can make it work within that number.
Although I do have to say, I didn't actually see on the documents that I was looking at the square footage for the total large rectangle. I saw, you know, down at the bottom on this page that you're on, it does say three, whatever it was. I didn't actually see the actual square footage for the top, that top option there on that current page. You said it was 350 something, but I think that if it's over 350, we shouldn't give you permission for 350 because that wouldn't cover it.
Yeah, I just got it right here. It's just over 351. It's 351.25. I would say 352, just to round up.
Right.
But that's the overall size for the entire box.
Right.
And I presume, Carmine, that Market Basket doesn't mind this being called one sign. I mean, this is the only sign that you folks want to install.
That's correct. As I said earlier, as long as this sign is approved, however it's measured, it doesn't matter to us. It's up to the board or the building inspector or whoever it is. But if you would like to list both and then this way, it's clear that both of them are, you know, both dimensions are acknowledged, that's fine. But that's, it's just that we want to be sure that this sign as presented is approved. That's all.
Perhaps we could cut through some of this and suggest that Rick come and talk to us about how he defined, you know, sort of defined, you know, measures signs or defines the measurement criteria for signs at a future meeting and we could, you know, kind of make a decision on this singular instance now. I don't want to dismiss Trish's concerns and I think, you know, being, making sure we're all clear is important. But I think we can also probably proceed on both tracks at once.
And Mr. Chairman, I would just point out that the modification we're seeking pertains only to supermarket sign. Okay. And this is only one supermarket permitted in the NBOD. So whatever you decide tonight is unique to this structure and won't carry over elsewhere. But I agree with Trish that, you know, the consistency for our future tenants is important to us as well.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments, questions from the board? Okay. Well, so first, we need to determine if the proposal is consistent with the concept plan. So I'd like to move that we find that the proposal as presented of increasing the signage for the supermarket, 129 Parker Street, to 352 square feet is consistent with the concept plan approved by Town Meeting and executed by the board slightly.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? We'll go down the line. Andrew?
Aye.
Bill?
Bill has recused for this one. Natalie will be voting.
Thank you. Natalie?
Hi.
Chris?
Yes.
And Jim?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And then, so then, let's see, I'd like to move that we increase the total largest area of tier one signage to 352 square feet.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If aye.
That's an aye. An aye. And I apologize. I just realized that I did not voice my vote in the first motion. So I am an aye for consistency with the concept plan. Thank you. And the final vote is to increase the overall signage area. And so I'll take a step back. I'd like to move that we amend section 1B, 1B. So the overall signage area allowed for the supermarket specifically is increased from 250 to 352 square feet.
Second.
All in favor?
Greg, just one question quickly.
I'm sorry. Please.
I just haven't got into this level of detail. There's only one supermarket that's outlined on this property, correct?
Yes. But that's correct. And so I'm kind of following the script in the staff report. But basically, there's, it seems that there's two levels. There is a definition of a tier one sign and then specifically a supermarket sign, which is a subset of tier one. So we have to change them both.
And this is, this only applies to this specific category?
That's correct. So we've, we've now voted to change the total largest area in tier one signs to 352 square feet. However, my understanding is that those tier one signs are then further defined and constrained elsewhere. And, you know, that we are now then going to go ahead and vote on specifically the supermarket only. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
My voice, please. Thank you.
Aye.
Aye from Jim.
Thank you. And Greg is an aye. Okay, I think we've done it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Angelo. Thank you, Carmine.
Thank you, everybody.
Can you give us an update when you're going to be opening?
I was just going to say, we're looking forward to it. We don't have a date laid out yet, but we are getting pretty close and we'll definitely let the town know as soon as we have a date that we think is feasible, but it should not be very long now.
Great. Thank you very much.
We're very excited. And thanks to the board for your support again on this. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right. Thanks, all.
All right. So we have a few more small items on this meeting. Let's see, election of chair and vice chair. Keenav, if you want to go, let's do the Keenav next. We'll skip to item six, recommendation on acceptance of Keenav.
So if I just want to add one thing, this is a request, we would bring it to Keen Avenue Town Meeting for acceptance by a town. One condition I would add is that it is subject to town attorney deeming that their title is sufficient to bring forward to the vote. There's some back and forth and digging up some old records and I just spoke to town council. So it would be, I would recommend that the board, if they vote to recommend approval, that, subject to that condition, that attorney, town attorney deeming that there's no clouds on a title or no, it's a clear title.
So that would be just conditional on approval by town council, more or less, just general?
Title search.
Yeah, it's, well, you remember when we dug through that stuff? It's old.
Because this, like the street was laid out in 1920, 13 or whatever it was.
It was, it was.
Yeah.
Because I had to go down to the registry of deeds and find the original.
Right. Everyone built buildings on it. Yeah.
So I guess I'll give it a shot. I think it's pretty straightforward, right? I'd like to move that we recommend that the town accept Keen Avenue as constructed, conditional on final sign off by town council.
Second.
Phil, can you just clarify, are we just recommending to the selectmen that we support their article? Or are you saying this is our article?
It is. I believe this is going to be our article, but it's, because it's DPW actually is who's doing it. And it's, I've never done this through the DPW process before with the road acceptance. But the board, the selectmen has to recommend approval and so does the planning board, who will be the ultimate sponsor. For now, I would assume we would be, but I, I'm not positive how that would shake out. I think if, on the warrant right now, I think we're listed as a sponsor.
Okay. Motion, motion, follow-up question?
Just, I guess this one probably to Wayne. Just, you know, road wise, material wise, everything was 100% okay and inspected and quality of work is okay and it's not going to fall apart in five years.
Correct. It was, it was not an easy process to get through, but we finally got through the punch list that was outstanding for all, what was it, Bill? Three and a half years? Something like that? We finally got through the punch list item and everything was accepted by both myself and by Justin as well.
Is it ever easy, Wayne, with you?
No.
Maybe not.
Well, this guy was a particularly interesting case.
Yes, he was.
It's never your fault.
For those of us who live through these ones, yes, it's.
Question about trees as well. And can you just, for the record, just let us know where we're, I think the neighbors wanted trees to be replaced, but then not at some point. I, we talked in previous meetings, so I just want to be comprehensive, make sure that we-
Bill, if you want to get into the details, you can. If I could summarize, Chris, in essence, the trees on each property were left up to the discretion of the building commissioner to determine what was planted and what, what was screening and front planting and so forth. And the bottom line is, that was all done and Rick, Rick acknowledged that he approved the plantings for each parcel. They're different on each parcel. So it's kind of, it's difficult to lump it into one.
So it's resolved?
It was resolved, correct.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
So a motion has been made and seconded. All in favor of the recommendation? My voice? Aye.
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 Sounds like the ayes have it. All right. Thank you, everyone. We've recommended. See here. Do the minutes real quick. August 25th.
I have two comments on the minutes. I was going to say page three, but apparently they're all page three. The second page, one. The top of it, talking about the segmentation rules. The discussion was really that the parcel from which this is being cut will eventually have more than five units and will eventually have one affordable housing unit. This, the way it's written, it kind of implies that this set of five will include an affordable. I don't think that's correct. It may or may not be correct, but I don't think it's definitive that that was five, one of them will be affordable. Follow that one, Bill?
You're on page two, actual page two, under item five.
Top of page two, item four, Zero Park and Street, A and R, the first two lines, segmentation rules. Then Mr. Erickson stated that this project does not include inclusionary zoning. There will be one affordable housing unit on the site where he said this project does include. But I'm not sure that the A and R parcel will have the unit. I just don't want to imply that he's going to have to do it. Bill, you unmute.
I just explained everything. Sorry. The subdivision request just came in today and that will, that will have the affordable unit, even though these, the A and R units are not part of the subdivision theoretically, the inclusionary zoning is going to apply to the 10 units. So I could put that in. It was a little unclear at the time, but that's, that's the story with that. So there will be an affordable unit. Developers are working with town consultant currently on that. But if it had just been five units, it would have triggered it anyway, wouldn't it, the affordable?
This comment really-
Limit six.
Is this, is this really required for this type of, for the record on this type of approval? Or lack of approval really in A and R? In other words, is this clouding, is this making more of something that, you know, doesn't really necessarily apply to the project? And should we just strike these two sentences from the, from the minutes?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Whatever is the board's pleasure, but my concern, of course, was that we got the affordable unit, and that's underway, but I'll do it whatever, however the board wants to.
I'd just clarify that there'll be inclusionary zoning among the properties to be developed or something, but not
Okay.
five A and Rs necessarily.
Okay, all right.
The term, the term "this project" is confusing things.
Gotcha.
Whereas the A and R is a portion of the project.
Okay, so I'll reword that a bit to make it clear. Okay, I got that, Bill.
My other comment was on item six, and it's pretty tough to follow, so my recommendation is, you know, we're supposed to list on the minutes the documents that we use during the hearing. We don't, but for this case specifically, I would, I would list the specific name of the document, so theoretically, somebody can later figure out what was the third line of whatever the hell we were discussing.
Planning board rules, okay. I think if I put really, on planning board rules and regulations, maybe that was what was missing there. And where's Mr. Gisolo open the public hearing?
No, you need to say the document titled this, this date and stuff. I mean, however, it's, it's on Board Doc, so you just have to reference the document name on Board Doc.
Okay.
While you're at it, Bill, just another typo under the Office of Municipal Services down below, there should be a space between addressed through. And maybe two Ds in addressed, last time I checked.
Where is that?
Under, let's see, number six, site plan pre-application meeting, the last paragraph. Oh, and another typo, TIS. The Office of Municipal Services spends a significant amount of time, you see that?
Yep.
Da-da-da-da-da, da-da-da-da-da, and it is hoped this, T-A-H-I-S, can be addressed, two Ds, and then a space.
Gotcha, okay.
Fix that.
And then also get the renumbering, the page renumbering.
Got it.
Correct.
Okay.
We'll do it.
So I'd like to move that we approve the minutes from August twenty-fifth with changes as noted.
Second.
All in favor by voice?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
I wasn't at the meeting, so I'm not voting.
Thank you. I didn't read the minute.
Read them, they look good.
All right, so that's four in favor. All right.
I didn't read the minutes, can I abstain?
You can abstain. We've got four votes, so I think we're good.
Yeah, I didn't read them, so I'm not gonna vote.
Okay. Election of chair and vice chair. All right, well, I'll do it again. If you'll have me.
Are you, you're.
That's my stump speech.
Silver tongue.
I'll second that.
Is this a two-year appointment or a one-year?
One year.
It's just been one year.
How many years have you done it?
This is, this would be your third.
And by no means am I trying to undermine you.
Yeah.
Yes, for granted, I'm just curious.
I think that's right, something like that, so, but I'm, I'm, it's my pleasure to continue, if no one else is chomping at the bit to jump in the chairs, chair. So. And Andrew, I assume you would stay on as vice?
I would be happy to do so.
So I'm not gonna move myself.
I will nominate Greg Gisolo as chairman of the planning board for the 2020-2021 season, if you will.
I'll second.
Thank you all. All in favor by voice?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Jim abstain.
I'm an aye. Thank you all. Bill Nemzer. We have a town planner update.
We do.
Do we want to nominate a vice?
Yeah, that's a separate process.
I apologize there. I would like to move that we appoint, is it appoint or nominate?
I think it's nominate.
I move to nominate Andrew Dillmore to the position of vice chair of the planning board for this upcoming year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Jim abstain.
Andrew also abstains.
Three, zero. In favor. All right, guys, thank you, and.
Thank you.
Oh, a couple things. First of all, going back to Coolidge for a minute, Chris, you're going, of course, okay, you'll look at the decision, let me know, and you're, and that is the last thing on that. Everybody else is good with that, the decision as it is. And I'm gonna be out for the next week. I'll have, Katie will probably notify Jim or Chris about any signature times or anything else, if everybody else is good with the stamp. Are you okay with it, Andrew?
All right, could you repeat?
Can, are you good with the decision for Coolidge School and the site plan?
Hundred percent. You can definitely use my signature. I'm sorry to say I didn't have a chance.
All right, Greg is, Greg?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, and Bill was already mentioned, he's okay with it. I'll see if there's any feedback from Chris on that. Town meeting, I told you, is Saturday, the third, one o'clock. Don't know. Here's the question, one of our items for the twenty-second has been taken care of, all debts, all accounts have been remanded to us. Do we want, if we decide to cancel our public hearing for Parker Street next week, I post it? Or you can decide to keep it on, open it up, and then just, you know, withdraw it. It's your.
You're the applicant to withdraw?
Well, yeah, you're, we're the applicant, you're the applicant.
Oh, okay, got it.
So if we, probably for the public, my recommendation would be, let's just post whatever we have to post to cancel it, so nobody's. And, and the only thing we'll have on the agenda that night would be our rules and regulations. Whatever, the board's pleasure.
I think that's a good idea, Bill, good idea.
Sounds like a good opportunity to have another executive session, man.
Do you want the executive session at six-thirty or at seven?
If we have nothing on the agenda besides the rules and regulations, we certainly could do it at seven.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah, that would be better, for sure. Unless we have like a lot of, you know, public hearings, then we could do it earlier.
No, only the rules and regulations, and we've got, and I'm gonna, after we make changes that, you know, the stuff that we looked at last week, and a couple of you are gonna send me any additional comments you had. I'm hoping that we have our new fee schedule completed then, because that's, that's the part of it that really I need to get done on there, see what we're gonna do there, but if not, we'll take care of your stuff, and then maybe have to postpone it until we get that fee schedule set. And that's all I have.
Okay, I mean, canceling makes sense, I guess, I don't, I guess we don't owe anyone an explanation necessarily. I was just thinking that that would be an opportunity to just tell everyone what happened, basically, but I don't know that that's really that important, I mean.
Agreement, agreement was reached on the sewer payment, that was, and it was made, it was under protest for part of it, that there is argument going on with DPW, and the engineers from the mainer crossing, on who, which which costs were assigned to who, and there was an issue, as you remember, that the town did some work additionally. That was not connected with the project, and that started a bit of a discussion about it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm okay offering that explanation if anyone brings it up. I think we should just cancel it.
Do you need a motion to withdraw the hearing?
Um, I'm gonna, that's a good question. I'm looking at that right now, what John Whitten wrote us about that. He said, he says, if the board wishes to cancel the hearing, we'll advertise the same way. There's, we won't, you can cancel a hearing. He says he wants me to put an ad in in the paper, and if we can do it the following week too, but it's just a courtesy of the public, you can, you can accomplish a same goal by posting a notice on the town's webpage. But it would be good to try and cancel the advertisement, cancel the hearing via advertisement. So you could cancel a hearing, and I'll just send out notice of cancellation, that's all. And we'll post it and put it in the paper.
Well, like, I guess I'll just move that we cancel the public hearing for one-twenty-nine Parker Street special permit revocation.
Second.
All in favor by voice?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Thank you, that sounds like five-zero to me, and so we will go ahead and cancel that, and it's official.
And again, I'll be out next week, so if anybody has any questions, Katie, Katie's in, and she can pretty much help you with anything.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the only thing I can think of is that if Adam needs, needs anything from us, if Katie, as long as Katie will be, you know, coordinating that.
Yeah, and Megan's plugged in as well.
Megan, great, perfect.
Right, so you'll, you'll be in good hands, so.
Can I, just, Bill, I sent you a picture the other day.
Yes, you did.
Of a signage foul. Greg, I just sent it to you for reference. I'll send it to everyone else. Down on River Street, where the no-left turn to go in, where the cuts through over to where the dispensary is gonna be. They've, on both sides of the street, do not enter signs, and it's just like super sign overkill. Looks like, wow, you can't, and I don't have everyone's text, so I can't send it to you, but I would like, I think we should look at it, because I think one of the things we have to be careful of, I think we have to get correct and adequate and working signing, but I think sometimes things can go there. Thank you. To me, it's like classic sign blight. Let's put identical signs saying the same thing twenty, you know, fifteen, eighteen feet apart.
We should send it to Wayne, and just make sure it's per plan first, I guess, and then.
Yeah, yeah. What, Wayne and DPW went on a safari for signage. They've been going with a number of plans around town. I I'll have to bring that to DPW.
Yeah, because that's just, I mean, I want it to be marked, it needs to be marked.
I am absolutely in agreement.
Yeah, okay.
Doesn't, I thought that that access up to the gate for butter. No?
No, so they have access because they need to be able to drive their truck, like the laundry truck.
Right, but they can't violate the left turn to do that. The sign shouldn't even be there. The restriction is a gate.
I'll send this to, yeah, I'll send this to Wayne and DPW.
I don't remember where it ended, but I just felt, I just knew that this was not the right end result.
I thought you were pointing on an unscreened dumpster, but you're, you're correct.
Hey, Bill? Bill?
Yes.
I've got a recommendation for you as to where the sign could be used, the one that they're taking out.
Okay.
As, as most of you know, I spend many evenings at the corner of Summer and Main, and the confluence of the five streets. And almost every time I have been there on the corner, somebody takes a turn against the traffic going up Main Street to go into McDonald's, and there is no sign, appropriate sign, to indicate that on the church side of the intersection, so perhaps they could use a sign there and maybe save somebody being hit.
I will put that in my note, and I'll send it to DPW and let Wayne and Justin address this.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a request of our planner?
Please.
Bill, last weekend, I was coming down Main Street, and I happened to pull up in front of the five-unit building that we approved some months ago, right across from Pleasant Cafe. You know what I'm talking about?
Um, Winter, thirty-one Main, I think it was. Yeah, thirty-one Main?
Yeah, Greg?
Yes.
I'm rather concerned. It looks like the project has been abandoned. There's weeds growing up. The property looks absolutely terrible. It could, we maybe suggest to the building inspector that he speak to the developer. It looks terrible on our Main Street, and we don't, we can't have that sort of thing on our Main Street.
Yes, you're correct, and we have, we have actually reached out to the, the developer was in the hospital, we didn't notice. And all the, I believe all the units are already sold, and there was an issue, the developer was on, nobody could get hold of, and we found out, I guess why. But the, the holdup with that was, and I think it's close, pretty close to getting finished, but there was a sewage connection that was not done the way DPW wanted, or was not proposed the way DPW wanted it, so that was, had a little kerfluffle that's being worked out. From us, he also, I was asking him, because we had that awning with the lighting, if you remember, we wanted some lighting on the street in front, and, and so now that's all put out there, and I think that will be taken care of shortly, but I will make a note again that you know, just the overall appearance, you know, just the weeds are, a lot of people are calling about it.
Yep.
You're right.
Thank you.
One, one final thing, Jim, you had raised in an email some, you know, continued concerns, I guess, you've raised them in the past, but continued concerns with Zoom, Zoom format. And I just wanted to bring it up that, you know, or just ask the question, Bill, obviously, we all know what, we know what we know, and we know what we don't know about kind of the state of the world, but Bill Nemzer, on your end, is there any, you know, discussion about town business being conducted in person at all that we should be aware of, or that we could take advantage of at any time in the near future?
No, the, the direction I got as of last week is that we, we don't want, they don't want anybody coming into the building other than staff. We did have two, there are two, I don't know if I mentioned last time, but we had two cases in town hall, and so that got everybody really like, you know, on edge, and I guess, and, and so at the moment, I have no information that's, you know, this is.
Our town has consistently underperformed, so I think we need to be cognizant of that.
And specifically, you're talking about the general population in terms of COVID, right?
Right, we have, we have much worse incidence rates than a lot of surrounding towns and a lot of towns in the Commonwealth.
But, so with that being said, I guess, you know, that doesn't mean that we cannot continue to try to improve this format. So we can keep thinking about it, you know, Bill, if you hear of other. creative ideas from other towns, or if anyone has any ideas about how we improve how we work in this environment, we should continue to dialogue about it, but it doesn't sound like we're going to be seeing each other in person anytime soon.
Just to make one suggestion, that we've, I have a lot of large Zoom calls for my work, and you know, to one point, like, it's easy to miss when you have a lot of people, someone raising their hand when you ask you function, like, it happened earlier this evening with Trish.
Yes.
Sometimes it's good to have someone who's not actively involved in the discussion, so, you know, it'd have to be Katie or someone else from the Office of Municipal Services, monitoring the participants' list to note when people raise their hands. Just, I mean, that may not be possible logistically, but it's a suggestion I'd make that we should consider, because you don't want to, you know, the easiest thing is people already feel a little bit disconnected. And so, you know, having something where they get overlooked or missed can really generate a lot of ill will. And that could be true for members, or for the public, or for experts, or applicants. Sometimes having another set of hands to kind of guide the logistical end of things is useful.
Well, luckily, we've had, pretty much, for the most part, either Megan or Katie or Joanna has been able to help, but we'll make note of that.
And, and that person should feel free to take an active role and kind of manage when things are getting missed. That, there's an empowerment element to it, right?
Well, so Jim, I'm sorry that we don't have better news on that front. But, you know, again, we can hopefully work together to try to make it the best that we can make it, given the circumstances, so thank you all.
Thank you very much for bringing it up. I appreciate that.
No problem. All right, guys, I'd like to move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Guys, have a great night, and we'll talk to you in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everybody. Bye-bye.